All right, can I get a motion to open meeting?
Sure.
Second.
Carlos and Brian, time is 5:41. We're doing everything by hand today because the interim is down in the building. All in favor?
Aye.
And Mina?
Aye.
Okay. And then you have who's attending right now, right?
I have everyone.
Okay, great. Can I get a motion to go into an exec session for interviewing interim superintendent candidates?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thanks.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to its republic and its citizens, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, start with public input one. If there's anybody here for public input one, please come up to the podium, state your name, and you have three minutes. Please don't mention any individual names.
Hi, I'm Larry Valtz. I'm a parent of a junior here at Pearson. And tonight I want to talk about social media and as it relates to the school district. I'm aware through conversations that I've had with various board members and other social working with board, spoken with board members, that social media is a frequently discussed topic, not just amongst us outside of the district, outside of the board, but on the board as well. School leadership, the friend that was hired to help do the superintendent search, referred to toxic social media as one of the issues that was highlighted by people who filled out the survey. And I know that one of our board members also spoke about toxic social media public input a few months ago. So why so much talk specifically about social media? And I think it's because it's become the most common form of public discourse today. We live in an age of technology. Our board meetings are recorded, we can watch them online after the fact. As a result, fewer people come here and fewer people come to this podium to speak to the board. Newspapers are struggling, letters to editor are fewer and farther between, intend to be written by members from the older generation who are not necessarily as involved in schools as they may have been when they had kids in school. So, you know, to me, social media is the de facto form of public discourse today. And I think if you compare Facebook groups to like online comments for newspapers, Newsday disabled their online comments temporarily two years ago, and they haven't come back. 27 East regularly, if you ever get a chance to read the comments that appear underneath news articles there are very, very hostile. I've never, if ever, rarely seen the level of hostility on any of the Facebook pages that really direct it to the district get anywhere close to what I see, you know, on the newspapers' websites. I think that social media can serve as a forum for people to express their frustrations about the status quo, and I do think that they enable anyone to get involved and speak out and learn about issues that traditionally have only been spoken about by leaders, by the boards, by administrators. I also believe that adding the word toxic to the social media part is dangerous precedent. To me, it's the same thing as putting the word fake before a museum, like. Labeling discussions on Facebook as toxic is nothing more than an opinion about the content, and I believe that people that write the posts that most of us read are not being petty or hypercritical, but rather they're posting because they feel unheard, hopeless, or powerless. So I would ask you to consider these questions. Why do letters to the board frequently go unanswered? Why does the district receive so many FOIL requests? Where can we get answers to our questions? It's clear that this is not a Q and A forum, and I fully understand why. Maybe there's a way for the BOA and the administrators to address some of these issues that are raised on social media, and I would like to ask you to keep in mind that social media provides a place which can help determine how the general public feels about certain issues. I think it'd be a really valuable tool to all of you. And, you know, I would ask that the board consider a way to maybe address some of these issues that are raised time and time again on social media, because I think a lot of the patterns, you know, repeat over and over again. And I think if answers were forthcoming, I think a lot of the rhetoric that you see repeat would stop. And that's my comments.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else for public input one? All right. So we're going to move to the annual district data analysis.
Just go right into it.
All right, so Mr. Malone and I are going to start with our grade three through eight ELA and math assessments. ELA is first. This year, you can see from the opt-outs were a lot smaller than in prior years, eighth grade being the biggest. And you'll see from everything else that there's improvement, but there's also areas of growth, and we're both working on that with our, you know, with our schools. So here's our overall growth. I can tell you for, in the middle school, the middle school department, actual, middle school ELA department has been meeting to like dig into the data, and also because everybody teaches everybody and it's a great small school, we can actually individualize where, what areas we need to focus on within our teaching. And it's great just because they can like piggyback off each other what worked in their class, what didn't work in their class, what they want help with, and they're actually visiting each other's classrooms to see each other teach, which is awesome and progress.
Is it okay?
Yeah.
Can we just, can I go back to the...
Go back.
By the way.
That way.
Sorry.
No, it's okay.
So just, Ms. Carrier for intro, just really, really quickly, just for those that are not aware, these tests are given each spring to students grades three through eight, both ELA and eventually we'll talk about math. Typically, April and May, the tests have been given. Ms. Carrier mentioned that some families choose not to participate. That's referred to as the opt-out on the chart you have here. This chart represents English language arts for the 2018-19 school year and the far right. When we refer to proficiency, what we're mentioning is a scale of one through four, four being the highest, the collective numbers of students that reached a three or a four. Okay, so when we say proficiency, that's what, that's what we're talking about on this chart. So like if you look at third grade, when the test was administered last spring, seventy-five percent of those students collectively reached a three or four, of the students that took the test. Grade five, fifty-one percent, and so on. And then, go ahead, Ms. Carrier, this chart.
Yeah, so I feel like this chart might be better just because you can see the growth from each year, and that 2013 year was the first year of implementation of the new Common Core standards. Now we're going to be shifting to the next generation standards. But you can see our, maybe some setbacks, areas where we might have had a setback and then improved. I feel like our community is actually really good, and our schools are really good at looking at the problem and trying to fix it for the next year.
Right. And one of the key instructional pieces that we utilize this data for would be to, as Ms. Carrier mentioned, look programmatically in the ELA, for example, how are our students doing with analysis of poetry? If that's an area that shows up as weak on the exams, that may be something that we tried to improve in the classroom. But then, in addition, we'll look at individual student performance on the test, and those that are falling below the standard benchmark would be getting additional support in the classroom, or sometimes in addition to time in the classroom through various academic intervention services that can be provided. Children could look like tutoring, as we know tutoring, but it could also be children that could benefit from some type of, say, test-taking strategies or even counseling related to how you approach a test. Maybe they, they show many times that they understand the material, but when it comes to actually sitting for an exam such as this, they need a little bit of extra coaching, especially for some of the younger students. As they progress through, they become more comfortable with these types of exams. But in the beginning, sometimes it's not the best reflection of what they know because they're so nervous going in.
And also with opt-out rates, sometimes our data can be skewed, same for each other. So this chart is our SAG-CARB versus overall in New York State, so we are achieving higher than the New York State average, as you can see.
And this is still with ELA?
Yes, it's still in with ELA. We'll get to math in a little bit. And then this next chart is our growth in comparison from our twenty-three-year comparison.
So if you look at, if you take third grade in 2017, again, we're talking students that reached the level three or the level four. So that proficiency mark in 2017 in third grade, fifty percent of the group reached three or four, went to sixty-two, seventy-five the following year. And you can see that across the different grade levels. There's some fluctuation, but generally the trend, trend is upward.
And then this might be confusing. So every, with the, New York State comes out with cutoffs for each, what's a four, what's a three. However, this is just the mean scale score, so what the overall score was for children. So our mean scale score is in the red, and this is comparing all East End districts. And as you can see, we're doing pretty well on the East End. There's areas obviously of improvement, but overall, we're doing pretty well in ELA.
I can ask a quick question on the slide. What's the reason for those particular schools and not other East End schools?
So I didn't want, we did, we've been doing these for the past few years, so we're able to look at the data for these East End ones and consistently have been looking at it, so we've been comparing it. We don't just use this as the data. I myself have been looking at other schools outside of the East End that are comparable to us for data. We look at Manhasset, we look at Port Jefferson, we look at Cold Spring Harbor to see what they're doing, and then we also call them to say, hey, how did you do here? What are, what's working, what's not working? Because we like to have those conversations with other educators. So we don't just keep it on the East End. This is just so that we can, because we started out, once Ms. Graves got here, using these as the basis, we've been using that just to see the growth, and then you can actually see it overall. It's a more complicated graph to look at, but it's actually helpful with all the data.
I think we got stuck with this slide because I started with this slide six years ago. And once you, what did Thomas Jefferson say? Once you add something to government, you can't take it away? And this is so hard to go find. You have to literally get inside the data charts and pull and extract, and I think they're cursing me that we ever started looking at these. But it does give you another data point to look at. It's another place to put things in context.
And I remember, I think, you saying at the time that we didn't include districts like Bridgehampton or maybe Amegansett because our population was so small.
Yeah.
That, I mean, I know when you started, there were grades in Bridgehampton, for example, that had three and four students in them.
Right.
So you, really, that is not a large enough body to be representative of data that you could project and compare.
Yeah, it was skewed too, it was...
Right, just too small population.
Yeah.
And then this is the percentage, so that was just the mean scale, then this is the percentage proficient, so those threes and fours that Mr. Malone talked about.
As we go through, unless you're going to do this later, I think it would be helpful, you know, it's clear that there are many areas that comparatively were soaring. There are some areas where it looks like we have more opportunity. So I don't know if it's going to be later or if it's premature to ask you to share with us some thoughts about how to address that. Is it too early because you're just looking at the data and you've got...
No, I think, I would say ask questions as they go along. You know, if something comes out. To that, Ms. Tice, I'd say, you know, year to year, we, you know, we're looking at how our grade levels are doing as a group. We're looking at how the, like at the elementary school, how are the three, four, or five doing collectively? I always, at the elementary school, and I know here at Pearson, I think they approach this data the same way, we do kind of look at it with caution. And also, I like to compare this data to the data we use throughout the school year. And that data that we use all, all year, I refer to at meetings in the past, the Ames Web data, or in ELA are found to simply not benchmarking. How does that data compare with, with the, the state data that's given back to us? And rarely, rarely do I, you know, get very surprised by this data. You know, the students that are performing well on those pieces of data that we use throughout the year would perform better here, and those that are struggling may show up as struggling here. So, you know, that in a way affirms what we're doing throughout the school year and, you know, bolsters our look at, at the student body.
And then I think in middle high school, it's a collective seeing how the grade cohort, the grade parties, we have until twelve, so we can see how they do on the English regions and then moving forward in other classes. And our regions, results have been very high, so it also fluctuates. And also, I think grades three through eight, you're figuring out who you are as a learner, testing is just coming to you, so there are some high points, and then some years people can drastically drop a little bit, just depending on how they're growing up, who they are becoming as a test taker. So just like Mr. Malone said, it is with a grain of salt because we see these kids exceed in other areas where their writing is way more proficient than what the state's saying. So now we're in the math.
Okay, so here, here's the, the chart that we, similar chart that we started with when we went into the presentation with ELA. This is mathematics. Again, the test is given to students in grades three through eight. The column on the far right side represents that mark of proficiency collectively, three or four of the students that took the test. Not all students in the grade level because some did choose not to, not to sit for the exam. So like in grade four, sixty-six percent of the students were at that proficient level. Grade five, forty-two. Grade six, sixty-two. Seven, sixty-one.
And in grade eight, there's the algebra waiver, and not as many students take the, they have, so they don't have to take the math eight assessment, New York State math is eight assessment, so that's why those numbers are so low, and also that's why probably the opt-out rate for that math eight cohort. And there's really no data because it's skewed at a small, very small group.
Is there any way, sorry, to track students that are in the district like three through eight, or if they come in at fifth or seventh, because that would potentially skew those results? Or is that something considered, like versus someone who's been with the district continuously?
Sure. Yeah, we, I mean, we have the benefit of being so small that, you know, you know, you know the students by name, obviously, so, you know, so we do that analysis, and some of the data tools that, you know, Mrs. Graves gets us access to, we can, we can drill down that way, too. And that, that sometimes plays into the numbers that you see here, students that...
Consistently here are doing better than someone coming in mid-year.
Well, well, students that, students that may come in from an area that's not following the, even the New York State curriculum, you know, you have students that move in from a different state, they may be exposed to a different program in St. Ma, and they would be at a disadvantage for sitting for this test.
And just like Mr. Malone said, we know every student, so we sit in grade teams going over each student's score, seeing where they've grown, where they haven't grown, and you're able to print out the data from years past to look at it. So it's kind of a cool analysis, but also helps our teaching, instruction to individualize it more. So this is the overall, and I'm going to go to the next one because that shows the color progression level, that might be easier to read.
Right. So again, we looked at this similar chart with, with ELA. As Ms. Carrier mentioned, in thirteen, 2013, that was the first time that the testing reflected the newer, newer standards. That's why you're seeing pretty drastic discrepancy between 2012 and 2013.
And that was the start of the opt-out movement, too. So not every child was taking the assessment.
I remember, I think there were some years in between where there would be a test where it was particularly controversial. Several questions where there could be two answers or not the right answer. Did anything like that happen this year with the tests? I didn't read anything about it, so I don't know if things have more normalized.
You know, it's particularly in the, in the three, three, four, and five, I, this year, I don't, don't have information on those lines, but you definitely do hear, hear of that, you know, and that has shown.
And that was more, more so with the rollout of new regents assessments.
Okay.
So you're speaking about the rollout of math B one year, physics another year, where pass rates were roughly fifty percent of what they would normally be across the island, for instance. So there was a big pushback from educator associations regarding how they rolled it out.
And I would say some years there are questions by teachers, and they go to the state to ask them what's going on. So I jokingly said the pineapple question in 2013 on the grade eight assessment, there was a pineapple question that was an inanimate object, but it asked about the subject. So teachers had a grumbling about that because it was not fair to the kids, and they didn't understand that they were supposed to answer through the lens of an inanimate object like the pineapple. And then there was a, an iceberg question where the iceberg, there was a reading on an iceberg in the Titanic, and that threw the kids off because of how they asked the questions. ELA teachers found that unfair. So it depends on the year, and also in ELA, sometimes it can be more skewed. And the math assessments, I feel like, pretty much have been steady, but it just depends on the year and also what the teachers feel, too. So this, again, this is our level threes and fours that are proficient, right, that Mr. Malone talked about in math. New York State first, us, how we're doing as well.
Right. You know, one of the, one of the pieces, when I, when I looked at the overall data, I think we received, I feel like it was right when school started, sort of like beginning of September, when we got the, the data results back. This year, the fifth grade results in mathematics were, in comparison, lower than the other grades. But then when, when I took a look at how did the fifth graders statewide do, that as well was much lower than the other grades. So it puts it in, it puts it in perspective. You know, the forty-two percent is, is a number that's, that's lower than how the groups are doing year to year, but in comparison to the state, to me, that's reflective of a, of a test that was much more challenging. If every, if statewide we're at forty-six percent, that, that forty-two percent makes a little bit more sense than comparing it to, say, the sixty-six at fourth grade.
Was it concerning that we were below the state average? Because I, I would assume that, you know, traditionally, we, we don't see that.
Yeah, you know, I, I guess I would just scroll back maybe to how many kids actually took the test and just do some quick math. With a small cohort of, of kids taking a test, what, you know, one or two kids hold a lot of rate, percentage-wise, so.
And then also, it depends where we look. The next slide, the next graph will be the mean scale score. That mean scale score is how they define a three, four, two, or a one, and the state decides that after they grade off it in the bell curve, it depends how they bell curve it. Sometimes they might bell curve this fifth grade test harder than the sixth grade test. It's all dependent, it's not very, you know, ladderly. Just like when the new Common Core, like Mr. Nichols was talking about, they skew that bell curve when they roll out the new regents as well. And then this, the next slide is just the comparison from 2017, 2018, and 2019.
About how many people, like what percentage of the eighth grade class is taking algebra?
It depends on the year.
This year.
So last year was the majority, it was like almost seventy-five percent of the kids were taking algebra. It was only like a twenty-five percent, because it's a bigger cohort, it was almost like ninety kids in the grade. I might be wrong, I might be quoting around.
But so it's generally over half the kids everywhere?
No, this year it's half. So this, it depends on the grade. We're pretty good about not wanting to push because we want our kids to like math, and also not have them feel defeated when they go to a upper level course. The way we changed math when I got here with Mr. Nichols is we made sixth grade two periods, seventh grade a period and a half, and that they are teaching the sixth and seventh and eighth grade curriculums within those years, so that they're able to access the algebra course. But it just also depends on the cohort. Sometimes you're not, it is a lot of abstract thinking in the way the Common Core works, and because of the rollout, some years the kids might get grasped a bit quicker, and some they might not. You just don't want them to feel like a failure in math, because once you feel like a failure, you're going to hate math, and you're not going to want to be part of it anymore. So it's this weird balancing act we're always doing. Do I want everybody to take algebra? Do I think they can? Absolutely, but it has to be in an appropriate way so we're not defeating the kids.
So typically, if you were to be in a, a normal middle school, it's a hundred and eighty periods of math each year, grade six, seven, and eight, which comes to five hundred and forty periods. When Ms. Carrier referenced the change at the middle level, basically, we got three hundred and sixty periods in year six and two hundred and seventy in year seven. So six hundred and thirty periods of instruction verse, over two years versus, what was it, five hundred and forty over three years in a traditional setting. So the kids are getting a lot of math instruction over two years to prepare them hopefully for the leap to algebra in eighth grade, but as you said, it's, it's not a good fit for everybody.
You don't want a kid to feel like they failed, so.
Do we have a higher percentage of kids taking algebra than statewide? I guess is the question that I'd love to know.
I want to say yes, but I don't know, because there are kids that are, there are a lot of, there was a handful of schools that are doing algebra for all, but I don't think they're having our results. So our eighth grade algebra, which that's what we'll talk about with the regents results, we had a hundred percent passing rate, and with a really high mastery, which is unheard of.
So I think we could go into great detail about this, but this is something that, that is often something administrators wrestle with teachers about. But you'll often find that teachers, it's advantageous to them to, to teach a homogenous group in terms of ability level and aspirations. So you'll often get pushback from math teachers, especially math teachers actually, but all content area teachers, that they want only the very best to be accelerated, because their jobs are a little bit more simpler when they're not having to differentiate the instruction. If you have heterogeneous grouping and you push more kids forward, what we've found over time is that more kids will access and enjoy success at a higher level. It's obviously a balance, but it's uncomfortable for teachers often to have to, that our instructional practice to differentiate.
And this again is the mean scale score for math with the cohort that we started in the East End school when Katie got here.
We'll just call Katie, let's not...
That's right. It's a Thomas Jefferson thing, which you put to municipality you can never take out.
And if we were looking over the years, Manituck used to kill us on everything, but we're evening out with them, which makes me feel a little bit better being competitive, so that makes me happy.
Just a little competitive.
Yes, just a little bit, especially in math when we first started, so.
Yeah.
And then, so if you see, this also gives data to East Hampton, Southampton, and Manituck, they have higher, they have a larger number of kids accessing grade eight math. And then this is our proficiency scores compared to them as well. Any questions, because we're going to be moving on to questions. Mr. Nichols, you're up.
Just there. I don't think we have a lot. Go ahead, Ms. Malone. Thanks. So to give you a little context, just to explain, when students sit for high school level courses, which we begin offering in eighth grade to those students who accelerate, they take a summative assessment at the end of the course, which is the regents assessment. And for students to graduate from high school, depending on what kind of diploma they want to earn, they have to take a certain number of regents assessments. So a regent with advanced designation is the one that we want our students to aspire to. They have to take in English, the English regents, in social studies, they got to take the global two, in U.S. history. In science, they have to take earth science, living environment, and either, I believe, chemistry or physics. Foreign language is a little different because they did away with the regents assessment, but I think that's it. So anyway, these are our regents assessment results for... So anyway, these are our Regents assessment results for two thousand and nineteen. Pass rate is sixty-five percent or higher and mastery is eighty-five percent or higher. So generally, across the board, those are solid scores. There's been a lot of talk over the years that Global is one of the harder assessments because it tests two years of knowledge. So the Global curriculum is ninth grade and tenth grade, where every one, every other course listed on there is one year in duration. So typically the Global results are a little lower than, than elsewhere, but we had actually a pretty strong year this year. Our mastery rates could be a little bit higher, in my opinion, in, in some of our math courses, but as Ms. Cariero stated, we've made some real solid strides in mathematics over the last few years.
And we had a large cohort of struggling kids accessing the math courses last year. The assessments.
Does this thing work?
No, you have to press the down button.
What do you mean by that, Ms. Cariero?
Um, students with disabilities or with IEPs, um, that normally might've had a alternative assessment. They challenged.
Those scores are for accelerated and non-accelerated.
Yes, everything. So it's not tracked, but you can see that we have kids, just like Mr. Nichols said before, that we want kids to access the higher level things. They were able to access the assessment and do it and you know that when they have that, they have more opportunity to grow as a student.
So I would say that in terms of differentiating these scores versus other districts, one of the things you wanna look at, and it's not shown on this slide, is the percentage of students who access some of your higher level Regents courses. So for instance, in mathematics, if you're looking at Algebra II, um, the percentage of kids who are accessing Algebra II might be different in Sag Harbor versus Southampton or East Hampton. The higher percentage of kids out of a cohort that access Algebra II, that is good for the district. The lower the percentage is generally not good. Because Algebra II is your, your capstone course in that three-year sequence from algebra to geometry, Algebra II. I'm gonna go on to the next one. So this is a five-year look at our Regents scores and, um, I think Mr. Malone and Ms. Cariero referenced that any particular deviation over a given year, you really shouldn't look at it in isolation. You should look at it longitudinally over a three to five-year period to see if there are any patterns. Um, if you look at our scores, they're pretty consistent across the board. I will say that the new challenge for us is that we're getting, um, some students with, uh, uh, interrupted formal educations. So this year, for instance, we have ENL students, eight of them, and the most we've ever had in the past is two, who have interrupted formal educations, uh, from where they came from. So we've got kids coming in who might be seventeen years of age with a math level of a first grader and a reading level of a second grader. So to get those students through these assessments, uh, is more challenging than it, it would typically be for a student who's been in our system. And where you're seeing that, in my eyes, uh, is in our, in some of our, uh, courses, the Regents that they all have to take, like living environment and, um, we, the English Regents and the US history exam. Um, we're struggling to get all of our students through those assessments. I'd like to see it as at a hundred percent. Um, but we're not quite there. And I think that that struggle is not going to disappear. I think it's here to stay. So what do we do? The answer to that, to that problem is what you do, you throw additional services at those students, whether it's academic intervention services, whether it's math lab, whatever it is that you can offer to help them prepare for success on those assessments. That's what we're trying to do. Any questions about this slide?
Um, just a question about what you just highlighted. So when you have a student that enters our district who is at interrupted, an interrupted educational history.
Yeah, they're called psych students, but yes.
Um, where they may not have taken the prerequisite, they haven't, have they taken the prerequisite courses?
No.
So is it, is it the state that requires them to take a more advanced course in their history? Are we placing them on their age and not their, not their history?
So when they come in, we do an assessment, uh, the nice slide, which gives us some, some, uh, sense of where they are at with language acquisition, but then we have to do an assessment, uh, informally with where they're at with their former learning. And with the goal being that to get them through the, uh, the Regents assessments that they need to pass by the time they're twenty-one to graduate. And the reality is that sometimes we don't, we're not successful in that regard, that kids will age out. And it depends on how late they come here, uh, to our country, to our district and what is their education level. So if we get a kid who comes, a student who comes when they're nineteen, you know, with, haven't taken any Regents assessments, they don't know the language and their, their formal reading level's a second or a third grader, you might not get them through.
And they may not stay in school till they're twenty-one anyway.
Correct.
And we've been really reflective about this. This year, we've met with the ENL department. Um, we're gonna continuously do it, as well as Dr. Mira, that meets with them, what, twice a month? Yes, so twice a month, just because we've had a big influx, but we wanna make sure that we have the right structures and courses to support them.
And different districts are approaching it different ways. So like, we sent our teachers over to East Hampton because they historically have a, a larger percentage of their population than our students with, uh, interrupted formal educations. And they have something called a concepts class. So they would not necessarily, in their district, if a student has a, uh, interrupted formal ed-education, they might not throw that student right into living environment with, with limited knowledge. They might have them in a concepts class for six months before transitioning them in. So we went over there to look at their model. The problem is that there's a little bit of a balance because generally, in my opinion, and I think research showed this, shows this as well, you're not better off separating kids out. You're better off having that heterogeneous grouping, um, because they'll generally acclimate. So striking that right balance, um, is pretty pivotal. So we're, we're sort of wrestling with that right now.
So does that require more in-class supportive resources for those individual students if they're within the mainstream class?
It does.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then also extra support classes.
And then it also, if we create the concepts class, which we're gonna do this year for the, for this inordinate amount of students that we have, that also has staffing implications because we have to create a separate section.
And then tomorrow, they're, for the conference day, they're working on some of that content work.
Yes.
Correct. So we asked them to do two things, short-term solution for this year and long-term plan to look at three and five years out, assuming that this um, problem is here to stay. I don't even wanna term it a problem. How about a challenge?
Trend, more challenge.
Let's see, that's the arrow. So AP stats, I don't know why this isn't coming up.
Keep getting the same.
There it is. Um, so the, the important thing to remember is, well, let me give you a little bit of context. I'll go through this really quickly. So Regents scores are important. Um, when I came to Sag Harbor a long, long time ago, twenty years ago, we had one AP course. And the goal back then, the goal today is to make sure that the kids who come to Pearson High School, in my eyes, have the same amount of opportunities as a kid who goes to a bedroom community outside of Manhattan. So if it's Manhasset or Great Net or Scarsdale or go on and on, that they have the same opportunities here as they would have there. And back in the late nineties and early, uh, early two thousands, I guess, the goal was to grow the AP program. So over a seven or eight-year period, we went from having one AP course to thirteen AP courses. We then made a decision as a community, and it was not without, um, some controversy, to move from AP to IB. Because we thought that the IB, um, education would provide even more opportunities for our students and was more aligned with what we want our students to be able to do when they left. The reason I'm mentioning all this is that when we transitioned to IB back in like two thousand thirteen, fourteen, the, the, um, the profile of an AP student in Sag Harbor changed. So typically, your most advanced students up until two thousand twelve, thirteen, took AP courses. Post-two thousand twelve, thirteen, they now took IB courses. So the AP courses that were left, which we left, uh, Global, we left AP World in tenth grade, we left AP Stats, we left AP Calc, um, what else do we have?
Government, Computer Science.
Government and Computer Science. Um, of those courses, the only one that I think, well, maybe there's two, AP Calculus still attracts our students who are most motivated to achieve at a high level and maybe AP Computer Science does as well. But AP Government, the kids who are really into government, they're taking IB History in eleventh and twelfth grade. Um, the kids who are really into math are taking AP Calculus, not AP Stats, that kind of thing. So the reason I mention all that is the percentage passing, which started to drop in around two thousand thirteen, correlated with the switch to the IB. So the decision we have to make moving forward, and it pertains to the next slide, is do we wanna continue to offer all of these courses? That is, all of these AP courses. So currently, the plan is to continue to offer AP Calculus because, uh, that is the capstone course, although IB Math is changing somewhat and may have implications for that over the next year or two. AP Stats, we have that course for students who wanna earn an AP credit, who don't wanna take uh, the IB standard level AP Calc route. So I don't anticipate stats going away, but I'm not necessarily happy with the results on those assessments. Bear in mind that, you know, at the end of an AP course, uh, their summative assessment is not a Regents assessment. It's a, it's a assessment administered by the college board and it's graded one through five, five being the highest, one being the lowest, three is generally the minimum that you have to receive in order to be considered for college credit. So anything lower than a three, in my eyes, is considered not passing. So when your, your, your total is two point two three, um, that's not really great. In defense of the instructor, they're not dealing with the same students who are in AP Calculus in terms of motivation and even their standardized math scores. World History, um, which is AP World in tenth grade. Our goal there is to introduce as many students as we can. Thirty-seven's a lot of students. That's out of like sixty-five kids who are taking in tenth grade, a college-level course. Having said that, I think that we need to improve upon the two point one six. That was not a good mean for last year. Government is a course that I would seriously consider not having next year because there's been a three to five-year period of pretty poor scores in AP Government. And I think those kids would be just as well served sitting in, um, regular economics and government. Computer Science, we introduced because it was a prerequisite to IB Computer Science and our scores are pretty solid there. So I would anticipate that if the numbers stay, uh, solid in terms of enrollment, we'll continue to keep that course. Any questions about the AP slides? Uh, this is really, uh, probably the most important slide to look at. Um, if you go to the lower left, nineteen, twenty, uh, well, let's look at eighteen, nineteen. We had a hundred and three students in eleventh and twelfth grade take at least one IB course. So if you have a hundred and forty to a hundred and fifty kids, that means that roughly sixty-five to seventy percent of our students in eleventh and twelfth grade, which is when IB is offered, are taking at least one IB course. Which means that the program is, is, is being accessed by a significant part of the population, which is what you want. Which also speaks to my belief that tracking and limiting the number of kids who access a specific course um, is not the way to go. Because what we've proved over time is that you can increase the number of students who access this higher level material and if you give them the resources that they need to be successful, they can do it. And we've done that here. If you go from left to right, what you'll see is the total IB enrollment, which are the number of assessments that are administered. No, that's the total number across the, the courses, total number of assessments administered. Unlike AP, the summative test is not scored one through five, it's scored one through seven. And three is not passing, four is passing. So generally, anything under four is not good. And the percent scoring four or higher, which is basically a passing grade, uh, you can see goes from ninety percent in twelve, thirteen, um, down to seventy-six percent this past year. This was a particularly challenging year. Uh, it did coincide with our largest cohort of diploma candidates, meaning that twenty-eight kids, twenty-eight students out of roughly sixty, almost half the class, challenged the entire IB diploma program. Meaning that when I went to high school, that would be the equivalent of you taking like ten to eleven AP courses over your junior and senior year. It's a lot of work and it's hard. And a lot of our kids, not a lot, but more than in the past, um, didn't reach the, the goal we had set. Some of that was due to them not applying themselves to the extent we hoped that they would. Some of it's senioritis. What, what you'll find is that some of the students in the spring semester of their senior year, if they've already been, accepted to college, will not complete some of the required elements of the IB program. Like their extended essay or something like that. So we've gotta be more proactive in reaching out to families and working collaboratively to make sure they do that. And we'll do that moving forward. Any questions about this? Okay. Um, this is broken down by subject and what you'll see, if we go all the way to two thousand nineteen, is the percentage of students who scored four or higher on the English HL, which is the higher level, which is a two-year sequence, and the number of people who took the test. So thirty-four students took it, ninety-seven percent scored four or higher. If you go down, I'll, I'll highlight the areas that I think we need to improve upon. I think French has been a struggle for a number of years now. Um, we made a staffing change last year, so we expected that number to be higher. So we've gotta take a strong look at, at how we're offering French and whether we're gonna be do, doing so moving forward. I think Spanish was just a one-year anomaly. Um, biology is a, we've had two years in a row now where we haven't done that well. Chemistry, uh, much the same. Physics was a one-year anomaly. Uh, everything else is pretty strong. So I think the sciences were a struggle for us, biology, chemistry, uh, especially. And we've had some discussions with the teachers and we'll continue to have those moving forward. Bart, if you look at the bottom, we had a large number, we had a large cohort this year. Um, we've had some discussions with the, with the teacher who's fabulous and, uh, we're still sort of digging into why that, why that result is what it was. Any questions about this?
I have one question. The number of parentheses is the number of students who actually took the, the exam, right?
Correct.
So, um, for instance, Computer Science, SL, does that mean that last year we had one student take the exam?
Yeah. I believe, yes.
There were three students in the course, but two of them couldn't complete it for health reasons.
But we cho, we chose, was it a, so was it a course where it was an instructor and three students?
Yes.
So it doesn't have to be in the context of reviewing this, but I think it'd be helpful at some point just to have a conversation about what's the threshold of deciding whether to keep a class or not? Um, you know, three kids versus ten versus, just, just so that the, that we in the public understand.
Yeah, I think that's an extended discussion, but the answer, you know, it is, it's a fluid answer. Because it depends on a given year, what you start with also. So what you end with, let's say you ended with three, it might've been seven to start. And if a couple of kids dropped, you then closed the section, uh, that kind of thing. But generally, we try to, we try to keep those sections like seven or eight or above. But one of the problems that you're gonna run into, and I've said this before and I'll say it again, is if you wanna be a comprehensive high school with seventy kids a class, you're gonna run into this. So whether it's, you're a, you're, you've got two hundred and eighty kids spread across four grades, if you wanna offer twelve AP courses or you wanna offer the IB diploma, one or the other, you have to make a commitment to run some sessions that are not gonna have twenty, even fifteen, even ten kids. And that's a, that's a juggling act and you need to make that decision year in, year out.
What is HL versus SL?
So HL, uh, in the IB program, to go through the, uh, there are two different types of course offerings. HL is higher level, which takes place over eleventh and twelfth grade. And SL can take place in eleventh grade or twelfth grade, but it's one year in duration. And to earn the diploma, you have to take three higher levels, I believe, and three standard levels. So they sort of speculate how you have to go about doing it and you have to score certain scores in each of those, um, assessments. Okay. So this is just a look longitudinally at how we've done over the years. I'll, I'll let you look at that for a sec. So what, you know, I referenced before that last year, in my eyes, was a down year. And you can see that in that the worldwide average, when you tally up all the summative assessments spread across the six courses and the required elements is about thirty. We were on an upward trajectory during the first, you know, five years of the program. Last year, you saw it dip. And, um, we're looking into why that is. I explained some of it before. Some of it was the size of the cohort. In other words, more kids challenged it. But I think the challenge for us is to figure out how to get, how to maintain the high level of performance while increasing enrollment. And we're gonna continue to tackle that. Any questions on this slide? Any questions on this slide? This is the ACT data and I think this is of, um, it's of some value. To some extent, it's of limited value because it really depends on how many kids from a graduating class sat for the ACT in a given year, how many sat for the SAT. You guys all know what the ACT and the SAT are? Yes?
I don't know the ACT.
Okay, so the Scholastic Aptitude Test, run by the College Board, for many, many years was the gold standard and that's what everybody took as the pre-exam, uh, the boards, if you will, for entrance into American universities. The ACT, uh, which is run by a different organization, um, has gained in popularity, very much so over the last ten, fifteen years. So you're finding more kids taking the ACT than in the past. Uh, the SAT numbers have sort of stayed the same, maybe dropped a little bit. Uh, and in reaction to that change, SAT, the College Board has actually changed their assessment to mirror the ACT because they're losing market share. Um, in any case, our, our numbers are pretty strong. Uh, this year, I, I think, looking at it, was a little bit lower than the previous year, especially in, um, actually, it was the same, twenty-four, five. That was the state and the district dropped from twenty-six, four to twenty-four, three. So it was a little bit lower this year. But again, I would look at that over a multi-year, um, lens to really make a summative judgment about whether or not we were doing something right or wrong. We didn't have the two thousand nineteen data, we have the two thousand eighteen data. Um, I think the important thing for me, obviously, this slide is important, but, you know, last year, I think, I had a class of, what was last year's class, Mr. Guy, and about sixty kids?
Seventy.
Seventy, and we had about twenty score above thirteen hundred.
Yes.
Yeah.
We had over ten score above fourteen.
Yeah, which is strong.
Most of the kids last year focused, the higher achieving kids, focused on the SAT, which I think impacts that ACT data that you looked at too. Kids choose, some take both, some focus on one or the other. So that's why those numbers aren't really, don't tell you much.
Right. And what we're doing very well, again, with the underlying goal being that the, the student who grew, and the family who sends their child to Pearson should have the same opportunities as anywhere, you know, on Long Island or in New York, including the very best districts. And I think that's the case. That's it, any questions?
Thank you for giving us these slides over the weekend so we can look at them.
Sure.
How did we do on SATs in comparison to the rest of New York?
So the last data that I could look at, um, which was, I think it might have been two thousand seventeen, it was seventeen from Newsday. That was the source that published it, because that's the only way we could access it. I think we were number twenty-two on Long Island. Uh, but they did not put out that, um, summative material the last two years. I searched for it and I couldn't find it.
Yeah, it was a project they were doing.
Do you have a sense of how many districts there are on Long Island, just to find context?
Over a hundred.
Over a hundred, so in the top twenty percent.
Yeah, it was, and I think that, you know, there's a, we can have a long discussion about what the most accurate predictors of educational success are. But the research says that the educational attainment level of the parents is you, one of the most accurate predictors. So if we really want to look at, um, and this sort of morphs into another discussion, but if we really want to look at, um, you know, comparable communities, I think you, you not only should look at the wealth, but you should also look at the educational attainment level of the parents. Um, and that's, that's hard to access. But if we're ever going to have a more detailed discussion about comparing ourselves to like districts, I'd like to look at that data.
Have you looked at our, uh, Regents mastery rates in comparative to the state or comparable districts?
We have in the past, I didn't do it this year. Um, the last, we had done it, I think it was two years ago. We were, um, looking at, I, I had expanded it to roughly fifteen districts from Riverhead out or Eastport, South Manor out. So Mattock, South Pole, Greenport, West Hampton Beach, uh, Settler Harbor, East Hampton, Southampton, Centimeriches, Hampton Bays, Bridge Hampton. Anyway, in science, we were number one typically. Uh, English and social studies, either one, two, or three. In math, we were middle, we were in the fifteenth percentile or lower, the last time I had looked. So I'll do that again and send it to you guys, but I think now in mathematics, we've made some strides.
For the IB diploma, do you warmly welcome all students to take that diploma?
We do.
Or do you have to have a hard conversation with some?
We, we invite everybody, we have an open enrollment policy here, but it's an open enrollment policy that's reasonable. So if I have a student who, let's say, um, you know, has a cumulative average in the high seventies and wants to sit for the diploma, and I see that their PSAT scores are nine, you know, nine fifty or whatever, I'll say, you know what, I'll support you a hundred percent if you want to do this, but here's what lies ahead.
Mm-hmm.
You know, here's what experiences told us, here's what you're going to have to do to be successful.
Give them their expectation.
Right, so that they go into it. And usually those discussions happen with the parents as well. Any other questions? All right, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we posting this presentation online?
Yeah.
When we're back, when we're back, yes.
Yep, yep.
All right, so moving on to the consent agenda, can I get a motion to approve item six point one through six point six?
Second.
I'm over discussion consent, so, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, not everybody, any opposed?
I have a vote, I'm aye.
Okay, it's unanimous?
Yeah.
With this layout, I'm just trying to see if we're running on, because it's different than what we usually look at.
Do you want to action on them?
All right, so action item seven point one, um, I have a motion to approve item seven point one.
Come on.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have questions, but is there anyone from the business office here? Okay, because I, I emailed, um, about questions related to, so I don't know if they're going to be able to be answered.
Major lady, I didn't, I didn't see the, I didn't see any questions, I'm sorry.
It's all right, you know what? And I found out afterwards that things were shut down, so I could call Victoria and let her know on the phone. But everybody was really busy today. So, uh, I'll just raise it and, um, I don't get a clue to me for voting, but I would just ask at the next board meeting if anything, any questions, we can answer.
Yeah, I think it was a question about a budget transfer, you just wanted to know the background behind it.
There were two things. One is that I believe that there was about a two point three five million dollar budget transfer and adjustments in the appropriation stat, status document. So I was hoping that, um, that there could be just some highlights of, of, of why and what, just so that both the board and public got better informed on it. And then separately, in the appropriation sta- uh, status document, there was also, this has to do with the, um, adjustments, that there were some very significant adjustments that have to do with the, the, um, building projects. So I thought it would be important just to highlight that. And again, if, it's not going to preclude me from, I don't doubt that the information is accurate, so I'll vote on it, but then if it would be easier at the next board meeting, then, then...
Yeah, I'll have to look at it.
No, no, I, I, you know, it's one of those crazy communication days. Then I would just ask that, um, that get addressed at the next meeting, okay?
Yep. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We have these two walk-on items.
Oh, okay. So, do we have this? Oh, so this is a new agenda item. So it's not on the, it's not on, so, okay.
Is this a walk-on?
Yeah, we didn't have access to even add it on, so, I don't know if you want to talk about it.
Yeah, um, this is, Eric here. I, um, I have Eric to, uh, help, uh, fill in the gaps. We, we were without a, um, a key middle school girls volleyball coach and, um, we were able to fill that position because it starts today. And we type in a coach as of today. Um, we were able to get a coach that has all the background, but they can't start until we can get online and pull down the veri- verify. So it's my, we have a pending, uh, teach verification, teaches our online certification that can haul the coaching data and everything, but this person is a teacher. So we know their fingerprinting, we don't. It makes, makes the coaching stats much easier. Um, and then we have, um, the person who has been the, um, the volleyball coach for the Barstool and volunteered without pay, but still needs to be board approved if you're a volunteer, um, to be, um, supporting this person in the role.
And this is to note that they're related, just to be transparent.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
One's the mother of the other. So I don't want anyone to be surprised when they find out afterwards and say, what's going on?
Yeah, but she, but it's doing this without pay. But, but if you have volunteer, they, and they're going to be on the sidelines coaching.
Right.
They have to be board approved.
So just to understand, this is, one of them's a recommendation and one of them is the applicant?
Or we're approving two people?
No, we're, we're approving two people. One of them is, one of them is, one is going to be the middle school coach.
The other one is middle school coach.
Yeah, and the other one is going to be the volunteer unpaid, like sometimes it would be paid.
Right, okay. And, and is the, just to be clear, is the one that we're appointing as the coach, is she currently teaching in another district? We just couldn't go online to verify her, uh, do the verification. But she's actively teaching in another district, which would lead us to believe that verification is there, but when you can get access, you won't get yourself.
Yeah, that's the one that says pending.
So that's why we say it's the, it's board approved pending that we can get online tomorrow and finish up the rest of the verification items, which we normally can pull down in a minute.
Do you need us, for resolution purposes, Victoria, do you need us to do each one separately or can we do it together?
I think it's separately.
Okay.
Just as a point of clarity, um, just as a process question. If we don't have access to verify, are we able to get the verification through another means? Like asking a, the principal of the district that they teach?
We call the, we call the school district, we got verbal verification, but that's not good enough for me.
No, no, I just didn't know if they could actually send you what you would normally get or...
Yeah, they could have, but we, um, but really, that's not how we should do it. It should really come through teach. But they did, we did make the phone call and got the verification that they did have fingerprinting and all that. But it really should not come from school district to school district, it should be through the teach, um, system.
So may I have a motion to, uh, appoint Carly Fisher as middle school girls volleyball coach pending, uh, verification up to the top?
Right, yeah. And a teach verification. Who was the first?
Kristin.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, is it unanimous?
Can I get a motion to approve Donna Fisher as a volunteer for the middle school girls volleyball coach? Um, pending also?
No, 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 she was fine. Just a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
I, I thank her for volunteering. I appreciate it.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous, thank you. Okay. I mean, we're supposed to have an executive session regarding security today, but because of the, um, internet being down and stuff, we don't have everybody available so that we're going to have to postpone that for another day.
Right, right.
And so, um, we'll move to public input two and then we're going to have to have another executive session. Uh, but, uh, is there anyone here, any other board members have any items to address?
I, I have, I had old business stuff, but because we don't have anyone that can answer business questions, I'll wait till next, next meeting, because I have a series of them.
Okay. Uh, anyone for public input two?
Hi, good evening, Mary Ann Miller. Um, I just want to ask a question regarding the, um, financial reports that you, uh, just approved. Uh, the, um, transfer to the lunch fund, um, if I understand this correctly, looks like we increased it, um, the, the general transfer as per the budget was thirty-five thousand dollars. And it was increased by ninety-five thousand dollars. Um, and I know that the, uh, school lunch fund has been struggling over the last couple of years. It was an item in the management letter that we need to be working on, trying to get that back to breakeven mode. Um, and so I'd just like to know what the ninety-five thousand dollars was needed for. I know there was reference to having to purchase new equipment, but I don't know that, if that's what this is for. Um, and, um, I also would just like to say that in previous years, um, the district was pinged by the auditors for the school lunch fund in particular. Um, we struggled for many, many years to have a school lunch program that was viable and appealing and successful. And at the same time, we got pinged by the, uh, auditors because we were running in the red. So it appears we can, are running in the red again the last couple of years. I see the losses in the financial statements. And we had agreed as a board many years ago to transfer ten or fifteen thousand dollars from the general fund, um, over to support the program so that it could keep running. Over the last three or four years, the transfer from the general fund to the lunch fund has increased from ten thousand dollars to thirty-five thousand dollars in the, in the, um, past school year, the, the twenty nineteen finished school year. So, um, I'd just like to know, because I know this is a program that we've worked very hard for many, many years to make viable. Um, it looks to me that it's still continuing to be a bit, um, tenuous and suffering. Um, even though we've done a lot of work to improve it, I understand and I know that that has been the case. Um, but I do think it's concerning and we should be monitoring it very closely. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a comment on that? Because it's relevant.
Yep.
At our audit committee meeting, the committee did talk about that number and about just the cost of the program. And I think we, it'll probably come up in the next meeting when we do committee reports, that we were going to recommend to the board that we have a public presentation on the food service program and the costs associated, so we could have a public, you know, a board and public, um, understanding of what's going on.
And so was the ninety-five thousand dollars equipment or is it needed just to make it...
Do you know what, I, I'm going to suggest we, we, I, I'm not going to say it off the top of my head because I don't have that in front of me, but I, I think it, you know, the recommendation was going to be to have that presentation sooner versus later.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public input? Okay, with that, um, can I get a motion to convene executive session for the purpose of discussing the employment of a particular person? So move.
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.